And will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Mayor Baker.
Here. If you will stand and join Councilmember Curtis in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and if there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. The next item on the agenda then is a presentation, arts and culture events in Kenmore. Sarah Hashi, the Arts of Kenmore, please.
That's already.
That's already.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Yes, so I am just here to announce that our next art exhibit out in the Arts of Kenmore Gallery here at City Hall will be Latino art and culture. This has actually turned into a three-event program. Our opening is this Friday, March 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. here. And then on April 13th, we'll also have a second event here for business inventors and entertainers. It'll be pretty similar to holiday tree lighting event, but this will be geared towards our Hispanic The art is primarily emerging artists, I'm very proud of that, it's one of the reasons I did this. Young, up-and-coming artists need support and need a place to exhibit, they were all very eager. Our two jurors are very, very significant. I actually hung one of the works out in the lobby by Alfredo Arguin. He is a local Seattle artist, he is probably one of the most prominent artists on the West Coast, he is already in the art history books, I am very proud to say. He is a national treasure for Mexico and Spain. So that's a little teaser, please go enjoy that piece of art. It'll be up throughout the exhibit through May 5th. But yes, the other two events, this event was, of course, for the artists, it is a great way to create positive dialogue for our community and support our Hispanic community. We've had, I've had tremendous partnerships with Biz Diversity. Sam, I guess I'll actually be up and speak also, is a member of Kenmore Business Alliance, and we hang out once a month, and I just turned to Sam a couple of months ago and said, hey, let's put something together. So he's in charge of the April 13th event. And then we'll have Cinco de Mayo over at the town square and the hangar, that'll be fun, with activities going on over there. But yes, this event and the art show are primarily, sure, it's about art and providing a space for not just the artists, but for our community to come and view art for free. Many people in the community that would never go down to Seattle Art Museum will swing in here and they start buying art, and it's a pretty awesome thing to watch. The other part of this was, yes, engaging our community. So along with Samuel, Raul Perez, raise your hand, is editor of El Cia de Diaz newspaper, has been largely involved with this also. And then also Elizabeth Mesa with the North Shore School District, she is director of ELL program for all of our young kids, and then runs the Natural Leaders Program, she'll be much more active in the second and third events. So yeah, this is a nice art exhibit, but it's much more about serving our community. And that's what we do here in Kenmore, just try to make it a better place. So I'm gonna let Sam come up and just speak a little bit about our second event in April and a little bit more about the community. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Well, from our end, we've been in Kenmore for about five years so far, working as a way to make the connection between the different communities. Biz Diversity, what it does, we expand the multicultural, diverse customer base of your business, okay? And what we're doing with that, we do it through the process of cultural joiners. Cultural joiners, there are the arts, the music, the education, the entertainment, the cinema, those that is part of the conversations within the business and allows the communication of flow between the community and each other. So in this case, appreciate that very much, you know, Sarah would have done, the opportunity to bring across what it is, the small business owner of the business in the Latino markets, and help as well the arts of the emerging artists in Kenmore, and have this vision here for the community to enjoy and get what we call the inclusionist business. Inclusionist business is a business that are going across frontiers or finding a way to communicate among borders in different ways, to find a manner that can keep the conversation alive. And we're planning then to do this for two and a half months in various ways, so that was she described, to do that. And hopefully, in the next also few years coming along, we have created a story that actually creates a continuum for other cultures as well and community to engage, to be engaged. And one of the ways how we do this, we're doing, of course, online, through our collaboration of diversity and inclusion model, but we also do through the newspaper. This newspaper goes along with 50,000 view readers in bilingual markets, Spanish mostly at this time, that's how we're actually creating this synergy among various towns and places in Kenmore area, okay? So I just want you guys to know, this is gonna be out there for you guys to pick up in your way out, to know more about how we are creating this notion, how we go about to do more of the promotion of how the art and the businesses can come join together. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I mean, it's very exciting to have this happening in our community. I think that the culture and the heritage that we have around us, that we need to explore more of that, and it makes up such a large part of our community, and such a valuable part of our community, that I'm really excited about it, so thank you very much for bringing this. Anybody else wanna add anything? I don't wanna take the show here, so. Anyway, thank you, thank you, Sarah, thanks for all your hard work, both of you. All right. Next item on the agenda. Usually I just read proclamation straight through, and that's the end of it, but there's too much going on here. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And the proclamation reads with various insertions. Whereas Principal Vicki L. Sherwood has been the Inglemore High School principal since 1992, and whereas Principal Sherwood has also served as assistant principal at Inglemore High School from 1983 to 1992. And whereas, of the more than 47 years she's been involved with in education, and more than 34 years has been in service to Inglemore High School and the Kenmore community, and whereas the vision and dedication and determination of principal, of a principal provides a mobilizing force for the students, and whereas principals have many roles and responsibilities, including educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysis, legal contractual and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, a community's most valuable asset. And whereas Principal Sherwood has been the embodiment of those characteristics and responsibilities in the vital role she has held at Inglemore High School. And whereas Principal Sherwood is scheduled to retire and move on to the well-earned next chapter of her life. And whereas Principal Sherwood's last day at Inglemore is Friday, March 9th, making the week of March 5th through March 9th, 2018, the ideal week to honor her. And whereas, receiving a key to the city is an honor reserved for those individuals who have served the Kenmore community in a highly significant ways, and whereas only one other key has ever been, to the city has ever been presented in the city's almost 20 years of incorporation. And whereas, the City of Council takes great pleasure in presenting its second key to Principal Sherwood and her leadership, community partnership and exemplary service to the community. Now therefore I, David Baker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, am pleased to proclaim the week of March 5th through March 9th, 2018, Principal Vicki L. Sherwood Week in the City of Kenmore. We've never done a week before, we've done a day. We've done days, we've done days for a number of people, never a week. There has never been anybody in our community who has touched the number of lives that Principal Sherwood has. They've only been keeping records in North Shore since 1998, and we all know she started in 83. But since 1998 till now, she has seen 16,625 students go through Inglewood, through Inglemore. And these students have graduated. And again, the school only has census from 1998, so I know you've touched one heck of a lot of lives, and I've had the pleasure of working with you. I remember when I first got on the council, we got you that digital reader board. And that was, that was a big thing back in, I think it was 84, so anyway, I am really, really proud and honored to be able to offer this plaque and key to our city, to you. I can honestly think of nobody more deserving.
I could thank the City of Kenmore especially. Once a Viking, always a Viking.[818.13][818.13](laughter) (applause)
Yes, our Councilmember Joe Marshall here was even.
Ann.
Oh, Ann, and Deborah also, there you go. See, she's had quite the opportunity to provide the education and the tools necessary for people in this community to succeed, so wonderful, thank you, thank you so much. All right, next item on the agenda is citizen comments, it's an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask you, please, limit your comments to three minutes, in deference to those who have worked hard to keep their comments within three minutes. The clerk, please call the first person.
Rick Verlinda.
That's a tough act to follow there, that's pretty impressive. Well, hello, my name is Rick Verlinda, I think I'm supposed to say my address, 19017, up on Kenmore, in Kenmore on North Shore Summit. So first off, the last time I was here was back in October, I invited everybody to Halloween that North Shore Summit's a place, I wanna let you know, it was the best Halloween ever. We had perfect weather, which hopefully most of you recognize, and we had over 1,000 people. So as much as we're planning on next year, it's gonna be hard, we, while we're anticipating it'll be hard to beat this last year, but it was wonderful, and I actually got a few people that mentioned that they saw me here, so. But the reason I'm here today is I'm the newest fire commissioner, been elected to the North Shore Fire Commission, and so I started in January, the next junior person after me has been there 16 years, so there's quite a break between, I think the longest person's been there 28 years, so there's quite a learning curve, as all of you know, I'm sure in your positions when you first got there. My background is I've been with Seattle Fire Department for 30 years, so I'm hoping to bring in some of that background as far as fire service, which the other commissioners are civilians, so they don't have that, but I'm hoping to do that. It's an open invitation to you and the citizens to attend our meetings, they aren't, sorry many people show up, it's the first and third Tuesday of the month. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 6th. One of the items that we'll be talking about is developing our strategic plan for the fire district. We'll be for sure asking for city leaders and citizens to participate, I'm kind of in charge of that, and we're figuring out kind of the scope of what it will look at, how much we'll get from people, we'll hopefully do some kind of surveys and those kind of things to get that started. I'm always available for coffee or meeting people, this is all new to me, as I said, my background's in the fire service, not the political side, and so I'm gonna leave some cards here that I just got, which is something new, and again, meeting with you guys anytime you'd like. I also understand from our chairperson that there is a, some work in progress of setting up a meeting between the council and the commissioner board, and I think they're talking about Lake Forest Park, or separately are together, so I'm looking forward to that. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to you and the people here, and I'm actually very excited to be the new fire commissioner and looking forward to it, and again, anytime you would, or feel inclined to contact me or any other commission, I look forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verlinda.
Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. My recent visits to the council meetings always leave me going home with more questions, so I have four comments. Number one, I was astonished and disheartened really, that not one council member was willing to second Councilmember Marshall's motion to open the conversation about partnering with the school district for grant opportunities to upgrade existing ball fields in Kenmore. Your silence spoke volumes to me. Councilmember Marshall's motion could not have been more generic, open-ended, or innocuous. Begin exploring a grant, preliminary analysis, dual tracking with St. Edward. Your unwillingness to even begin this conversation is completely baffling. Rob Carlinsy noted that if we started tonight, we wouldn't be able to meet the mayors' grant deadline, of course, it is complex. But why didn't you lay that groundwork months ago? You haven't been aware of grant opportunities? You haven't heard Parks Commissioner's questions about school fields? If you didn't want to second the motion to open the conversation two weeks ago, I'm wondering, when do you think the appropriate time is to open that conversation? Number two, to you, Councilmember Marshall, I request that you continue to bring forth a motion to begin exploring partnership possibilities with the school district. If Kenmore can't possibly get a grant application turned in to meet the 2018 deadline, please continue to pursue a motion that will allow ample time to meet a 2019 deadline. Number three, I found it ironic, I guess comical if it weren't in real life, to listen to the indignation of some of you over the Morelands Elementary staff restricting your use of Morelands Parks during school hours, but not batting an eyelash about the 24/7 restrictions that the City of Kenmore would be imposing on access to prime state park land, to all but a select few who join a sports team and have Kenmore's permission to be on that field. Number four, finally, I heard a new spin on the St. Edward Ball Field Project at the last council meeting. The new spin is that the City of Kenmore will be saving the natural field. It's an interesting perspective to me that suggests that destroying a wetland, installing artificial turf, fencing park users out, and adding stadium lighting is actually saving anything. Perhaps the word recreating would be more accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
John Hendrickson.
Good evening, John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. I want to talk to you tonight in general about ethics, and in particular about the ball field development projects. As council members, you have a responsibility to ensure that when you're, the decision, the information being provided for decision-making is truthful, accurate, and if you find false information coming up, you should, you need to get rid of it. If someone lies to you, they're lying to the 20,000-plus people in the City of Kenmore. If you're up here and you lie, you're lying to the 20,000-plus people in the City of Kenmore. As that goes, we had a, two weeks ago, we had a representative from Brent Smith's Little League group, Dave Lane, came up and he gave you some false information. He said St. Edward shot you down nine or 10 years ago, so Bastier did the right thing and put the ball fields in up there. St. Ed's never shut you down. Little League got out of there when they imposed a $30 fee voluntarily. Bastier didn't step up to do the right thing, I was on the council at the time, they were pressured, they needed permits, like the same kind of permit pressure you tried to put on state parks. I met with Dr. Church and talked to him about it. He said Daniels is in support of the ball field. Now, over in Westport, when the city tried to say Daniels was supporting the ball field, the State Commission interrupted them and said, wait a minute, we just talked to Daniels, he said he's non-committal on the ball fields. Okay? So I've given you some documentation from the history of this in 2008, and for Joe and for Deborah, there's letters there, attachments, one from Marilyn Chase, one's an email from staff questioning whether or not the city was lying to Marilyn Chase and lying to the staff when they said the school district didn't support artificial turf ball fields at Kenmore Elementary. Marilyn documented, she met with the school district and found out that wasn't true. I met with the school district and found out that wasn't true. Last week, when you guys were talking about the ball fields, Dave Baker responded that a mom can't walk her kid over at Morelands Park, a dad can't play with the frisbee, and he knows that we cannot pull into the parking lot and eat our lunch without the school district throwing us off the property. I've been up there, and for the small part where the kids are there, they come up to you and they ask you to register. They don't throw you off, you know? Dave should've been the first person to stand up when you introduced this project at St. Ed's, because we lost 290,000 in 2008, which I put in your attachments, and I gave you the journal, the general ledger showing you those costs. We abandoned those costs, we lost those costs by using the paw permit illegally. You can verify that with staff. And you have the same staff with Debbie Bent and Rod Costaguma here, who did that at that time, okay? So Dave, Dave's not gonna stand up to the Little League, he's the guy that's supposed to stand up and do the right thing. Brent is always doing what he's always done. He's gonna pressure you with his email list, and he's not gonna tell the truth.
Mayor, we're at three minutes.
Dave isn't gonna stand up to them, because he doesn't care how much it costs. He's not gonna have any enemies so he can get reelected. You folks have to stand up and do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson.
There's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you all for your comments tonight, we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, motion stance approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the amendments to the King County Municipal Code, Chapter 1.10, Disclosure of Public Records and Fixing an Effective Date, Ordinance Number 18-0460.
Good evening, we are in council. We are here tonight to discuss an ordinance relating to public records requests and how they are administered. I'm just here to introduce Teresa McAllister to you, many of you already know her, she works in the city manager's office, she is our public records officer and has been fulfilling that important responsibility since 2012. Being responsible for the efficient processing and delivering the information requested by citizens to over, well, almost 400 requests each year, over the last couple of years at that, at that level. And as, as a public records officer, she participates in required training, that's something else that is set out in state law, but she is gonna present to you the ordinance that was really generated by updated legislation with, with respect to how, how to administer public records requests and, and recognize that there, that there is a cost to, to agencies to be able to meet the requirements of the, of the state law. So with that, turn it over to Teresa.
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Teresa McAllister, I work in the city manager's office as the administrative assistant and public records officer. Tonight, I'm bringing forward for your consideration, Ordinance Number 180460, amending the Kenmore Municipal Code, Chapter 1.10, relating to public records requests. But before I go further into the ordinance, I just wanted to give you a quick background of the public records world in Kenmore. Since 2011, the average number of requests received by the City of Kenmore has steadily increased by about 18% per year. Last year, we received 380 requests. The majority of requests are for documents relating to planning, building, and development. In 2015, the state legislature directed the state auditor's office to collect information from public agencies in Washington about the nature, volume, and associated costs with responding to public records requests. Kenmore was one of over 900 agencies that participated in the study. This gave Kenmore an opportunity to take a look at the nature and the costs of our public records requests. Kenmore's costs for responding to requests in 2014 was over $55,600. That number includes staff time, IT costs, attorney costs, and of course, copy costs. The results of the state auditor's public records survey assisted legislators in adopting two legislative bills in 2017, and that amended the RCW 4256, the Public Records Act. The legislation provides for improved public records administration and authorizes public agencies to charge fees associated with responding to public records requests. Attached to the agenda bill is the summary, is a summary document detailing the 2017 PRA amendments. The legislation also directs agencies to incorporate these 2017 updates into their code. The proposed ordinance amends Kenmore Municipal Code, Chapter 1.10, incorporating these administrative and copy fee updates. A quick note about the copy fees, the city will continue to defer to the statutory copy fees in response to requests rather than calculating actual costs. As required by the new law, the amended Chapter 1.10 provides for a declaration of the reasons that calculating actual copy costs would be unduly burdensome to the city. The ordinance, as allowed by state law, authorizes copy fees to be charged for electronically-produced copies. The proposed new fees are for electronic files or attachments uploaded to emails, uploaded to data, cloud-based data storage, or other electronic delivery. There's also a fee we can charge for the, per gigabyte of the transmission of public records. So a copy of the proposed fee amendment is also attached. I wanted to make note that the city does proactively I wanted to make note that the city does proactively post several documents to the city's website for the public to access at no charge. The administrative updates to the municipal code being considered for adoption are highlighted in your attachment number three. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Your Honor, can I just add one thing? Teresa, you said we post several documents to our website. I think a better word might be many?
Many, yes. You're right, many.
Okay. And there's no charge for people to download those, obviously, because they're on our website?
That's correct.
Yep.
Questions?
One thing I wasn't quite clear on is how often we're going to be charging for that. I mean, I can't imagine you're going to charge like 25 cents if you have to send five pages of something to send.
The actual fees. So, written up in the fee resolution is also a waiver for hard copy, for hard copies. If there's six pages or less, the fee is waived. For electronic or scanned documents, it's 10 copies or less, the fee is waived. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions. I'll turn it this quick. So, you said currently, we're spending, or at least we think are, the city's cost around $55,000 per year to respond to public records. We are currently charging something for copies. What are we recovering? What are the requesters? How much are we raising from, from the current copy costs?
So, we are recovering 100%, but the, in preparing the total cost for recover, for responding to public records requests, we did include what it costs to make copies. But it's, but we are recovering 100% of the...
Of the, of the actual copy cost, but of the, but that's, but responding to a request is more than just copy costs.
It's more than just copy.
So, I'm just trying to get a sense of, I'm trying to get a sense of, if our, if our cost is $55,000 in staff time or copies and all of that per year, what are we bringing in from the current copy?
I don't have that number.
I do. So, under, under state law, the cities, counties, agencies subject to the act are not allowed to recover administrative time for copying, for taking. If they're in archive, you cannot charge the requesters.
Right. No, no, I wasn't asking that. I'm trying to figure out what our net cost is. Because if we are charging something to people who are getting copies...
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know.
I can't imagine that actually costs us 15 cents to make a copy.
Correct.
I'm trying to kind of figure out what our net is currently. And do we have any idea what to expect the new fees to generate based on what we've done in the past? What do we expect kind of new revenues to be?
Okay. That's a good question, and I don't have an answer for that right now, but I would be happy to get that for you.
Okay. And then what, just one last question.
Uh huh.
You said that most of our requests are on land use. Could we be more proactive just putting permitting and land use documents online to maybe save us from having to do a lot of those public records?
I believe, although I can't really answer for that department, but from what I understand, they are, with mybuildingpermit.com, permitting process has become very active. A lot of documents are on there, but I think I'd have to defer to Brian Hanson to be able to answer that. Come on up, Brian.
So, we currently do put a lot of documents on our website for larger projects, or projects that are in the pipeline right now. But unfortunately, we have a lot of older projects that are large databases, and we don't have the capacity to put those on the website. So, if we know of a project that's vulnerable to public records requests, we'll put all that information online.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Councilmember Smith?
That's exactly what my question was. I would just like, because I know that there's electronic files for so many of these documents now. It just seems like if it's a matter of a little more cloud space, it just seems like, it seems natural to try to upload it. So, I would say anything we can do to make it more easily accessible is probably worthwhile. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Just for Marshall.
There was reference to the new provisions allowing for refusal of bot requests. Have we gotten many of those?
Um, no, we have not.
Any other questions? I'm curious on the logs. I don't see any place there for keeping track, even though we don't charge for it, of staff time. For instance, if we have to go to Brian to have some information, and any idea, there's no log there to, to keep track of how much time he spent, or anybody else that you need to go to as our public records person to, to gather information to fulfill the request. Are we not keeping track of that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, actually, with, with our documentation of what kinds of activities each of us engages in, filling out, not time cards anymore, but electronic records about how many hours spent per kind of activity or project, that's, that's a much easier way of tracking staff time that is spent.
So, if we wanted to track how much staff time in the past month has been in fulfilling public records requests, we'd get a lot more than Mrs. McAllister's time. We would get everybody's time that's spent anything.
That's right.
Yes.
And it wouldn't be beneficial to have that in one place, in a log, so that you could just refer to the log and go back, say, nine months and pick out how much time was, was spent there? The reason I'm asking this is because AWC asks for this type of information all the time. And other cities do supply that information, and I'm just surprised that we can't go back easily and, and, or can we go back really easy?
It's, it's, it's a lot easier than, than previously because we have a new time reporting system that's online. And, and I was approving time sheets today, online. And so, that's, that's a very much improved way of being able to track that time.
Yeah. Our new financial software system lets us track our time by activity, and so we can say we spent so many hours this week on public records requests. And the financial software system can produce a report that says how much time citywide was spent on public records requests over X amount of period.
So, then if I wanted to go back in 17 and say, "How much time has been spent on public records in the last year?", would you be able to...
We launched our new software system, I think, mid-17, so we'd only be able to go back then. Before that, it was all on paper.
So, a couple of things popped up as we were talking. So, if somebody requests emails in with a request for electronic documents, and you provide them, and there's a cost associated with that, and you're going to be emailing these or putting them on FTP or Dropbox or something, and they're not actually going to physically be coming into City Hall, how do you expect to collect payment?
So, most of the documents that I provide electronically already exist in electronic format, so there is no fee, and so it's easy enough just to send that off. When somebody asks for a document to be scanned, they're usually in-house to look at the document, and they flag them. At that point, I collect payment.
Okay. I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit with this. I'm generally somebody who's in favor of public records and being as public as possible.
Sure.
And I understand the impetus that some cities have had to push for this legislation that passed in Olympia, because there are a lot of, a lot of, but there are people who are abusing the Public Records Act to kind of harass cities. I'm not sure if that's the case here. You know, I see the list that we sent out, the weekly updates to council with, you know, the public records requests, and they all seem fairly reasonable and fairly project-specific. I'm just not sure what we're trying to accomplish by, because from what I can tell on this, essentially what we're doing is just adding a cost to scanned documents and some other digital documents. And I'm just not sure if I can quite see what, what we're hoping to accomplish, especially when I don't know what the, especially when we don't know what we expect that to generate. Is it a lot of money? Is it a couple hundred bucks a year? Where do we expect that to fall? And if so, is it worth putting that extra burden, that extra step in front of the public, getting to documents? And I'm not sure that the case has been made that it's worth putting that extra barrier in front of people yet. You know, I just don't know if we're, if, if we have the volume to justify adding, you know, what I suspect will be a fairly nominal cost at the end of the day. I suspect, well, could be wrong, but I expect it to be in the low thousands, maybe, and that would be at the high end of what I'm guessing. So, I'm just not sure what we're accomplishing with this, other than making it slightly more difficult for people to get a hold of public records. You know, it's not a, we can't charge for the staff time, as, as our attorneys pointed out. So, we're really looking at is, is a little tiny thing that we're adding to digital documents. I don't know what that, what that's getting us. It's not a huge cost to the city, that part of it. The staff time is. Can't charge for that.
Right.
So, I'm struggling with trying to kind of figure out what the goal is of this at the end of the day. And I would be more comfortable if we had more numbers on what this, what we actually, you know, looking at past years, what this might generate. But I'm not quite there yet right now.
Yeah. I hear you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Maybe I'm just confused, but I thought our goal was just to align with the new state law, that we aren't creating this fee just for the sake of...
That's right.
Making money or anything else. So, if we make a dollar or $100 is irrelevant.
Right.
We're just trying to be in alignment with state law.
Exactly.
So, I mean, a little follow-up on Councilmember Herbig. Is, if somebody were to electronically request some data, because I've seen a number of, of requests go through for plat information or this, that, and the other thing, I mean, that's easily, can run into gigabytes of, of data. And they do ask the crest electronically, and we send them, after some research, 10, 15 gigabytes of data. How do we charge for that? How do we cover that? Or don't we? We just say, "Forget it." But if somebody walks in, then we charge them.
We would notify them there's a fee. I, I don't know. I haven't done this yet, so I've been thinking about that as well, because we don't have an online system for making payments for copies online.
So, going to Councilmember Curtis' question then, do the, does the state law say that we have to charge for digital documents, or is it just allowing us to add a fee if we wanted to?
So, you currently charge for copies. This, I think, was assisting cities and counties who were struggling with, with, "Okay, we copy hard copies, 15 cents, but what about all this electrical, digital?" Of course, they act and contemplate those type of records. So, it was just putting down certain things that I think certain agencies were finding to get expensive. I'm getting to your, your question. You're not required to impose fees. In fact, in the fee schedule we see in your agenda with the summary, it gives, as I believe was already described, the ability to waive fees at the city's ability, and also to charge what's called a flat fee. So, if you're looking at a request, that could be a little bit of work, but not that much. You could just charge a flat fee of two bucks, and that is it, as long as you show it's at least $2. It could be, you know, a couple hundred dollars. So, it's really up to the discretion of the officer. And I would say that there I have myself been, I have experienced where some of these things cost in the high upper hundreds for actually discreet requests. And that is when you actually start the dialogue with the quester, not to make it expensive, but to actually say, "Do you really want that?" And then they come in and they see those boxes, the gigabytes, and they go, "No, we don't want that." And it really helps because then, and Ms. McAllister is excellent with she does, she has a dialogue with them, and they actually find what they want, and it's usually pretty, pretty reasonable. So, no, you don't have the requirement, but you do have some tools to allow your officer to kind of identify and even customize what might be produced.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the law has changed, and you can ask them what they're looking for.
You, you could always ask, and she does routinely, but what this provides is just a little bit more tools in how to provide it to them.
Anybody else? All right. So, we are actually looking, come on here, you can do this. We are looking for a, boy, this touch is just not working tonight. We're looking for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 18-0460. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All right. Is, any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Shabnik?
No.
4-3.
All right. Next item on the agenda is amendments to the Kenmore Municipal Code, Section 1.20.010 and Chapter 8.25, nuisance ordinance, 18-0461.
Good evening again, council. This ordinance is to align the city's nuisance junk vehicle laws with the state statute and establish due processes for that process. Any questions? It's, should be pretty straightforward.
Councilmember Marshall?
So, in one sense, it incorporates parts of the state law into the Kenmore Municipal Code, which we hadn't had previously, but as you state, to, to mirror, or at least to, to pull out the due process provisions from the state law and put them into our code.
Well said. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So, Chair will entertain a motion to approve nuisance ordinance Number 18-0461.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, the second was...
Councilmember Shabnik?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Clerk, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
All right. Next item, staff report.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
Nothing to add, except it's great to see your vice principal of the time, then principal, receive the keys to the city from your high school. So, that was great. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Just a couple of things. One is, I just want to underscore my support for rehabbing existing ball fields so that we do not need to take out more open land to make ball fields. And that's something that I've felt for a long time, rehabbing fields as well as partnering with schools. And I do want to get to the part of our agenda for this year where we do entertain a strategy for partnering with the schools and opening that dialogue, whether that involves grants, levies, partnerships. I don't know what form that will take or what the timing of any request would be, but I do hope that we open that dialogue sooner than later this year. And on a more fun note, I know we're always talking about where's the fun, and I'm sorry that our art folks left because I just had, you know, a brainwave a few weeks ago of how it would be fun to have the little oval Euro stickers that relate to Kenmore, and I've mentioned this to Rob, and I just think it would be fun, and it'd be fun to have the art folks help design that, so I hope we can get to that as well.
Nothing to add.
Your Honor.
The next time you all see me, I will be done with session and hopefully better rested, so looking forward to that.
Cool. Couple of things. I need a... I need somebody from the city as a representative for Sound Transit 3 Committee on 522 for Kenmore. And I can't do it because I'm chairing the committee as a Sound Transit Board member. So I'm looking for somebody.
I'd be...
You can do it?
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to do that.
I think it's important that we continue to look and be part of this as a city. There's going to be electors, I think, from all of the regions. And I think the first meeting is going to be somewhere around April 4th. But it's important that our voice is still there. Even though I'm on Sound Transit Board, it's good to have a city person. So, yeah. So thanks, Nigel, for volunteering.
Mayor, did you want to mention that tentative date?
April 4th.
Yep. In the late afternoon, I believe.
2:00.
Okay.
So therefore, I'm canceling our meeting.
The 4th is a Wednesday. Oh.
I beat you to it. Okay, so this is kind of a fun one. And I really don't know how you guys are all going to react, but one of our notable residents has come up with a great idea. And I kind of think it's kind of fun and kind of cute because, like you said, where's the fun? Fourth of July. You know, we do the fireworks show, but we really don't do anything else in town. And I think it's about time with our 20th anniversary that maybe we put together a little something for the 4th of July. And so Gretchen Nixon had a suggestion of a chicken parade. And you get chickens, people that have, because there's a lot of people have chickens in the community. And you have a parade out in front of City Hall. And you march them in a circle, and people vote on the best dress, the cutest, the ugliest, the biggest, the smallest. And she's happy to organize the whole thing if we could say, okay.
Was she reading the Seattle Times this weekend or...
Yes, she says yes.
It was today's paper, wasn't it?
It's in the parade, in the, in Edison, I'm sure she meant Edition, of the Seattle Times this morning, yes.
Nancy Osley has a comment.
Uh-oh, I sense trouble.
No trouble. I just happened to be there in Edison yesterday.
Okay.
As the parade was about to start. And, you know, the weather wasn't great, but everyone seemed to be having a good time. The Seattle Times article said it took 12 minutes for the parade to pass by.
Well, given it could be a small parade, maybe it could pass by a couple of times. So anyway, just a thought of something that we could do on the 4th to try to liven things up in the city, so... Yeah, I think that's really all I have this time. Not much going on. I want to thank Deborah Shubnik for showing up at the Sound Transit Board meeting this past week. It helped. We had people there from all five cities, and it worked out really well, so... The board and staff at Sound Transit are very, very pleased that the five-city coalition is still together and still speaking with one voice and still asking for the same things, so... We're making big points. There's a lot of cities out there would love to duplicate what we did, but they just can't get into agreement on some things, so... Anyway, if there is no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.